I think there is no change in the situation.
Is there any other news about, I only know what she wrote, so.
No, nothing has been changed in the situation. As I talked to you yesterday.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So take two, because they're not even taking. Good evening and welcome to the July 12th Annual Reorganization Meeting of the Garrison Union Free School District Board of Education. Our first agenda item as always is the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you would join me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By way of preamble, those of you guests who've joined us, I get the pleasure of watching two meetings tonight. The first is our reorganization meeting, in which we take care of a number of formalities that basically reconstitute the board for the coming school year. We adjourn that meeting and then we begin a regular board meeting, which we take care of a lot of regular business associated with the wrapping up of the school years we've ended and the start of the new school year. It is a somewhat elaborate dance, and I actually have a script for this. So I've called the meeting to order, normally the district clerk will at this point take over this portion of the meeting, but since the district clerk is not with us tonight, we have to nominate a district clerk pro temp. So I have a resolution in my agenda.
Yes.
It's resolved that the Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District appoint Sue Hutter to the position of district clerk pro temp for July 12th, 2017 reorganization meeting. Any of the seats, all those in favor?
Aye.
No extensions, no nays. I'll do that for the regular meeting. Congratulations, Sue.
Thank you. So I take over the meeting now, and my first duty is to swear Diana in, who's newly elected.
Another clerk reels about to pull out this.
Can you?
I don't know where the word goes.
We're ready to go.
I, Diana Swinburne, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the Board of Education of Garrison Union Free School District according to the best of my ability. Welcome to the board again.
Then I stand corrected on our last meeting, this is the fourth time we've taken that vote, is it? Four times, congratulations, thank you.
And so my next duty is to see if we have nominations for board president. I nominate Ray for president.
Give me a second. Give me some move down a second, sorry.
Some move.
Second.
Any other nominees on the floor? So resolved that the Board of Education of the Garrison Union Free School District hereby elects.
You actually take the vote now?
Oh, okay, vote.
That's why we have a script.
All in favor?
Aye.
No extensions, no nays.
So, resolved that the Board of Education of the Garrison Union Free School District hereby elects Raymond O'Rourke as president of the Board of Education for the period of July 12th, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Some move.
Actually, we, it's fine, we don't have to vote yet.
You still vote, yes.
You have to vote to affirm the nomination and the vote of the person in, that there are no other nominees? I'm asking at the procedural point, it doesn't matter.
It was second, it was second, and then there's a motion made on second and duly adopted.
It makes a difference. Just ask for all of them in favor.
All those in favor?
Ah, no extensions, no nays. That's face care of that.
Okay.
All right.
So now, I say, the new president takes over.
It's back to me. Thank you, Sue.
Oh, I have to swear you in, huh?
Oh, all right, well, I'll come on.
Bear with me, it's new.
It's all right.
And she's been trying to get us, and she gets us by the clock.
Oh, I didn't.
That's okay. Raymond O'Rourke, I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of president of the Board of Education of Garrison Union Free School District according to the best of my abilities. On this slide.
I don't know who you guys can vote.
Smattering political.
Congratulations.
I thank you very much. All right, now it's my job to call the nominations for the position of vice president of the Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District, and I will use the president's prerogative to offer a nomination, Derek, who can succeed himself in the role. And are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate James Hope.
James Hope. All right. That's fine. So now Sue, take me through, we just simply have a vote, all those in favor of Derek, vote, all those in favor of James, oh, there was, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Second vote.
Do we need to say, do we need to go through?
I don't care.
I don't think we do.
I just want you to understand what we're doing.
Right, I understand.
So I think we're fine. At this point, we, on the floor right now, we have four vice presidents, Derek and James. So everybody that wants to vote for Derek, can I just?
All those in favor, Derek, signal by saying aye. Aye. You can both say so. All those in favor are no abstaining.
You can vote, you can vote yourself.
All those in favor of naming James.
Aye.
To, and Courtney, an abstention or?
I don't know. Is that terribly silly, honestly? I don't know, I feel like I haven't set through enough to understand what the responsibilities are and what I'm choosing.
These positions are terribly arbitrary, but so.
You sit next to Ray.
I would like to speak.
You do the agenda.
I don't think it's necessary, but you certainly can, of course, since your prerogative. But just so you know, as I understand it, we had a vote, we had one vote for Derek, we had two votes for James, we have one, or three, or three.
So Derek, Derek, you can't vote for yourself?
Yes, he can.
Oh, he can?
Oh, I can, I just.
He's not. Okay.
Courtney, so you have the opportunity to abstain.
I'm going to abstate.
That's fine, that's absolutely fine.
So as it stands right now, we have one Derek, two James.
Right.
Do you want to speak?
No, not yet, because I want to make a point. It's my understanding that you need a majority, even with a quorum of only four, you still need a majority of the board to bring into effect any of its decisions. So a two to one vote is not going to be sufficient to elect anybody in any position. That's what I'm saying. My suggestion would be, I'm going to suggest, I'm going to suggest for you, I will move to modify the agenda and table the election of vice president for two reasons. One, I want to clarify the question of whether or not we need a majority of the full board, that is, four votes, even though we have just a quorum, or whether we can elect an officer with just two affirmative votes. For that reason, I want to take counsel on that question. Second reason I want to table this is that I have not spoken to James, nor have any of us, about whether he's willing to take on this particular position, and I think it's only fair to him to give him a chance to say yea or nay to the nomination. So with that, I'm going to move that we amend the agenda of the July 12th reorganization meeting with respect to the election of vice president, and we table that matter until our next board meeting or whatever that date is. That's a motion that requires a some move, requires a second. Seconded, all those in favor? Aye. No extensions, no nays, good. I'm glad we cleared that. Yes, by all means, please do.
I just, no, I just wanted to make a statement, because it's nothing against Derek. As you will know, I've been on the board long enough, I think it's important to have a vice president. Because of Derek's work, he can't always make the meetings. So I think it's important to have somebody that's going to be here. It's not just the not making the meeting, it's the continuity of being at every meeting and knowing what's going on and what's. So Derek, please, I hope that's not true. And I didn't call James either, as I didn't call Derek, so.
So anyway, for all those reasons, we'll table that until our next meeting, I think we should be according to Hoyle.
Not that you.
Resolution five A. Okay. We're going to have a resolution five A. President, vice president, we table that, all right. These are district clerk, district treasurer, and deputy district treasurer. Resolved, Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District approves the annual appointments of officers to serve the board for the period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. Those appointments are Beth Murphy, district clerk, an annual stipend of $6,500. Pat Martz, deputy district clerk, an annual stipend of $1,000. Sue Hutter, the district treasurer, and Beth Murphy, deputy district treasurer, an annual stipend of $1,000. These are all positions.
Some move.
Just out of curiosity, what is Sue not going to say?
It's always just going to include it.
It's in your position.
Your job title is such that effectively lines up, okay. Just to make sure we aren't treating you unfairly for some unclear reason.
Okay, leave some move.
Some move.
Need a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Let me just see, no, wait a day, Beth will administer the other, oh, right, okay, Beth will swear you in, in this district, in New York. Okay, fine, that's fine. All right. Onto the consent agenda, thank you everybody for helping through that. Now hopefully we're in somewhat smoother waters, but that's okay, at least we know what's there, we know the procedure. On the consent agenda, there are items 11. Resolved, Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District approves the following consent agenda of annual appointments for the period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, as presented, district tax collector is Sue Hutter, an annual stipend of $2,500. Treasurer, central and extra classrooms activities accounts, Sue Hutter. The claims order, Melissa Harris, an annual stipend of $1,800. School district physician, Peter Gergli, M.D., an annual fee now to receive $3,000. Attendance, clerk Catherine Mariani. Joint sick leave bank committee members, Laura Mitchell and Sue Hutter. Committee on special education and committee on preschool special education members. The chair, the alternative chair is a school psychologist, a middle school special education teacher. The school psychologist, special education, regular classroom teachers, that is the Garrison faculty. Support services personnel, surrogate parent slash guardian at Lydum, Melinda Higbee. Parent representative, also Melinda Higbee. Records access, records managing officer, Elizabeth Beth Murphy. Title nine, section 504, ADA compliance officer, that's Laura Mitchell. Liaison for homeless children and youth, Jessica Van Decker. And the school attorney, the firm of Kirwin and for Lazo, P.C.
Some move.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. No extensions, no nays, for the information of those watching, none of those are changes from last year, yes.
Is Catherine back?
Yes. She has moved.
As of this, we are last week.
Thank you.
Okay, we also have additional appointments, oh. One additional appointment that would have been, it's broken out separately, it would have been, under normal circumstances, included in the list of 11, I just read, but it involves the asbestos designated, I hear it. It's Dick Timmons, so Dick is being appointed to this position through August 30th, at which time he's going to retire, when his successor's name will swear that person into those positions. So, resolved, Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District approves the following consent agenda, annual appointments for the period of July 1, 2017 through August 31, 2017, as presented, number one, asbestos adhere, or adhera designated, Dick Timmons, and chemical hygiene officer, also Dick Timmons.
Some move.
I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. No extensions, no nays. We have additional, we have designations now. Six penis. All right, resolved, Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District approves the following consent agenda of annual designations for the period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, as presented, petty cash, that's one. Petty cash funds, district treasurer Sue Hutter, who made a $200 petty cash fund. Two, the official newspaper, the Republican County News and Recorder and the Journal News. Item three, official bank depositaries of manufacturers and traders, M&amp;T Bank and TD Bank. Item four, official bank signatories, district treasurer or deputy district treasurer in the absence of the district treasurer, to sign checks for all district accounts except the extra classroom activity account. Item five, signatory authorization for extra classroom activity account, that's the district central treasurer, extra classroom activity account, or deputy district treasurer in the absence of the central treasurer, to sign checks for the extra classroom activity account. Item six, signatory authorization for district documents to board president or board vice president in the absence of the president, to sign documents on behalf of the district. The purchasing agent is the superintendent of schools, the certifier of payrolls, is also the superintendent of schools. The educational official to receive court notification regarding a student's sentence or and or adjudication in certain criminal cases and juvenile delinquency proceedings is also the superintendent of schools. The superintendent of schools will make residency determinations. The discrimination officer will also be the superintendent of schools. Association memberships, who belong to the New York State School Boards Association, Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association, and the Rural Schools Association of New York State, item 13. New York State School Boards Association, NISBA representatives. How we get to fill in the blank?
I think we should change that to a lot together.
All right, then I'm going to.
And the same with the legislative liaison.
All right, and the high school liaison, it's fine. So I'm going to move that we table items 13, 14, 15, and 16. No, I'll tell you what, let me just, as we'll do, the resolution is that the Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District approves the following consent agenda, items one through 12, for the period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, as presented. I need a some move for that, I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I also resolve that the Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District amends its agenda to table items 12 through 16, 13 through 16 of the consent agenda marked annual designations.
Some move. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Abstentions, no nays, just put in amendments, Sue, table until our next board meeting.
I just, I just not a consensus.
Yeah, absolutely, no consensus. This is where, just so you know, guys, until you enter this, one through four, we need to name a representative for the New York State School Boards Association, and to Westchester-Putnam, we need to name a liaison for both, board liaison for Haldean and O'Neill, and a liaison for the Children's Education Fund. Same reason we table James's nomination, it's not fair to anybody who's not here. Stick them with those assignments if they're not available, so.
That would be all for them, but.
We just can't, we just give them jobs out. Okay.
All in favor?
Oh, all those in favor? Aye. No extensions, no nays, so we modify the agenda that way. Okay, in the same way we named Dick separately for pesticides and chemical compliance and asbestos, we resolve that the Board of Education of Garrison Union Free School District approves the following consent agenda of annual designations for the period of July 1, 2017 through August 31, 2017, as presented, item one, school pesticide representative, Dick Timmons, supervisor of buildings.
Some moved. Second.
All those in favor? Additional authorizations. Resolved, Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District approves the following consent agenda of annual authorizations for the period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, as presented. One, we authorize the superintendent of schools to approve line item budget transfers of any amount remaining within a budget category and any budget transfers between budget categories according to limits prescribed by Commissioners' Regulations, section 170 dot 2, and Board Guidelines, up to $5,000. Item two, superintendent to apply for grants in aid state and federal and sign necessary documents as appropriate. Three, superintendent to approve staff attendance at conferences, conventions, and workshops. Item four, superintendent to make temporary personnel appointments subject to the approval of the Board of Education, and such temporary appointments shall be formally placed for action by the Board of Education at the next regularly scheduled meeting. And item five, establish Milo's reimbursement rate at the current IRS rate.
Some move.
Need a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. No extensions, no nays, once again, nothing changes here from last year, we're reaffirming standard practices. Okay. Adoptions and approvals, also a consent agenda item. Resolved, Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District approves the following consent agenda of annual adoptions and approvals for the period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, as presented. These are our coverage, it's where we secure each year. The faithful performance blanket bond coverage for the following personnel, as noted, the district clerk, $1 million. The district treasurer slash central treasurer, $1 million. The deputy district treasurer, $1 million. The district tax collector, $500,000. The account clerk, $500,000. The claims order, $1 million. And public officers law, adopt the supplemental indemnification, defense obligations authorized pursuant to public officers' law, section 18, to the maximum extent permitted under that statute.
Some move.
Need a second.
Second.
Go ahead, questions, comments?
So can we just clarify, in this section, we're in, are we under the?
You're in the public office.
Come on it for covered.
Yep.
Now, these amounts haven't changed, but I always, every year, check and.
We check with the underwriters to make sure that we have the covered, this is pursuant to their recommendations. All those in favor? Aye.
Just for us to know the board members.
This is the right. Oh, look at this. A journal reorganization meeting, well done. Resolved, Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District adjourns this reorganization meeting for July 12th, 2017.
Some move.
All those in favor? Aye. Well done.
Make it open next.
I have a question.
Yes.
Don't we normally reauthorize our auditor?
That is a good question, and I.
Not to just lie here, like, this is the last year that the 16, 17 school years, the last year they audit, we're going to be putting an RFP out probably in the fall, early spring for the next audit. So we don't have an audit for this current year, the 17, 18 year, this is their last year, from the last five years, but every five years.
Five-year audit.
Yep.
Good question. Okay, who called or ordered the?
I'm going to.
All right.
They don't have to say anything.
So effectively, I just call that, call the regular meeting, the July 12th regular meeting of the Board of Education to order the first agenda, item there, our principal's remarks. John?
Good evening. Since our last board meeting, we closed out the 16, 17 school year. I think that, I would say from my perspective as a principal, it was a very, very smooth closing to the year. Smooth constitutes minimal disruptions, minimal incidences with any excessive boisterousness. It was a nice calm ending to the year. It was also a nice time to say goodbye to our graduating class of 23 eighth graders who have now left us and will be going to high school. The festivities were just really a wonderful way to encapsulate the nine years that most of them spent in this building. Would like to bring to the board's attention that there was an incident at the graduation that I would like you to be aware of and sort of just have a follow-up on. After the presentation of diplomas, there was a minor accident where some students fell off the highest risers in which they were seated on our stage. I did follow up with Mr. Timmons to sort of get an explanation as to what happened and how it happened, just so that we can make sure that something like that does not happen in the future. It seems that there traditionally had been a back edge that were put on the highest risers to prohibit the back legs of chairs from falling backwards. There was with the larger class last year, a reconfiguration of the riser situation. And at that time, an alternate way of protecting the back row was put into the place where we used our coral risers behind the last riser. The coral risers have a built-in guard rail for safety when in use, and these risers are mobile and have built-in casters, and when the casters are engaged with the floor and folded down, they are supposed to be firm and not movable and provide enough of a security so that if somebody were leaned back on it, they would be safeguarded. Unfortunately, even though we had moved the chairs up so that they're far away from the edge, one student did have the chair pushed back far enough where the back edge went over. He went to sort of catch himself and threw another two students off, and the combined weight of three students moved the coral risers, and some students fell off the backstage. I think it warrants, obviously going back to the system we had before that, where there's actually a faring strip or some type of actual piece of lumber that's secured to the back ledge, so that clearly no chairs could go off of that. I'll make sure I will work with Dick's replacement to make sure that that is secured, and that those will be permanent additions to those risers so that we really make sure that no accidents of that type ever happens here in the school again.
John, how are the kids?
There, I haven't followed up with them since that day, there was some icing that was going on.
There's a shoulder and a vest.
Yeah, yeah, and I haven't heard anything since, so. The other sort of old business I'd like to follow through with is that traditionally, we house a summer program for two weeks in August. The idea is to take those students that we think might have some regression issues with their learning over the summer break and find a way to bolster some of their skills in both reading and mathematics. Unfortunately, we're not able to run that program this summer. This summer, we just had a staffing shortage with our teachers being available to teach those two weeks. We did look into Haldean as an alternative, since we heard that they were running a program. When we found out that they were only running it for basically outgoing kindergarten through second graders and leaving behind essentially, you know, two-thirds of our population, we found for equity that the best thing to do would be to not offer a summer program and to really figure out how to remediate these students that might be prone to summer regression as soon as we get back in September and October. Certainly, we will be using Julie Green as our new interventionist to further this cause, and we're also looking to see if there's any way to actually supplement some of the skills reinforcement for these students in a before or after-school situation as well.
John said it. We only have two teachers who would run that program.
Last year, we had five.
Five teachers ran that program. And all of our, none of them were available, that all had other commitments or?
Yeah, on the elementary level, last year, we had, I had to contract, basically find somebody, a former colleague of mine to come in. We only had two out of three at the elementary level. The other two last year were Stacy Ricky and Tiffany Munson, and neither of them were going to be available this summer.
So, so let me add, so once we knew that, we weren't going to be able to staff this program with GTA members, faculty. Were we, could we have gone outside and found other teachers from other districts who were also on summer break who could have run the program for us?
It was getting a little bit late in the season to conduct the search and then, you know, and to do that. And as I was discussing with Laura, that option, we felt that one of the real benefits of the program is that when it's our own people, they really sort of know where the learners are and where they left off, and there is sort of that, you know, added benefit of having our GTA members provide the services and that there's a knowledge of where they're coming from, there could be the continuity of what they accomplish during the summer and during the next school year, so.
Let me try this differently. Do you think, is it your impression that the availability, the unavailability of five faculty members reflects some sort of mood?
five faculty members reflects some sort of mood, a, a condition within the GTA with respect to these kind of assignments and other things you might ask them to do, or is it just circumstantial?
I think it's circumstantial. I don't, I don't think, I don't, I don't sense that there's anything culturally within the faculty that's, you know, preventing them from wanting to take on a summer summer.
I'm mindful of our last board meeting, that's all.
You could connect the dots and, and, and think that perhaps, but I know with somebody like Stacy Ricky was that she's got a new baby at home and, you know, and just said, you know, I would love to do it in this summer, I just can't because, you know, I want to be with my baby, and I'll be back on board the following summer.
I have a question. What is our duty to children who have IEPs, who, I mean, those are the children who would have been invited. So what is our legal duty to those students?
It depends on a student's IEP. There are, there are extended year services that would be on an IEP. We do not have any of the people that are, attend this school during the school year. We do not have anybody who has that on their IEPs, so there is no obligation for those students to provide anything outside the regular school year.
John, do, one of the benefits of having the summer program was for the intervention program? Is that RTI? Is that what's official?
RTI is a program that we're mandated to, to implement during the regular school year. There is, there is no mandate for us to prevent, to present the summer academy. It is really something that we have done through just due diligence.
It's beneficial.
Knowing that there, that there's a lot of statistics about summer regression of academic skills and is a way to just really help those kids that might be more prone to have further regression.
Is that one of the two areas that we tried to?
Reading, reading and mathematics, yes.
Was, yeah, so that, that area will not get the help?
It, it will not get the help in the month of August, but we really anticipate that we will still want to do our best to help those kids, and we'll just hit the ground running in September and offer some supplementary services for those students.
Maybe next year, we can start earlier trying to get the teachers, and then we can go maybe outside for teachers?
Absolutely.
Because I think we, I thought we've had discussions that this is very beneficial for some of those kids that might be losing.
Part of your, part of your tenure, John, when, when we were really pressed on, on budgets, and we looked at things we could do and must do and could do, we always found a way to segregate the funds for this program because the sense of the board has always been, it's a very, it's a very valuable thing to offer, and it pays to be better than front, so.
I agree.
Can I ask how many students typically attend summer academy?
About thirty.
Was there?
Well, I'm sorry, I should say thirty are usually recommended, and then, you know, depending on availability, fluctuates between, I'd say, you know, low to, low to mid twenties.
Was there any communication with those families or families that have participated in the past or families that, children who would normally be recommended for this year? Or if there was some communication with them of, we're not offering it this year, but here are additional resources to pursue throughout the summer that helped bridge that gap?
So it was communicated, there were some families that, that, that came to me afterwards to have some meetings and suggested follow-throughs for the summer and wanted more information on what the plans would be to support their students in, in the fall, so that, that's, did happen.
Thanks, John.
No problem.
Other comments, John?
Just a few things about what is going on during the summer. Just wanted to give you a, a quick update with regards to hiring. Laura could apprise you of the progress with replacing the director of facilities. We are actively in the search for a special education teacher. We're about to approve later in the agenda the retirement of Faith Knight. She decided that very, very last minute that that would be advantageous for her, so we have a posting for that as well as for some special area options that we're looking to pursue in the fall. At this time of year, we are very, very busy with, with cleaning and preparing a new, for a new school year. We are anticipating some exciting room relocations. We've decided, we're looking, we have been totally decided, but we're, we're doing the feasibility of moving our nurses' facilities into our current staff room and finding an alternative spot for our, our staff room. We were looking at, with the decrease in elementary classrooms, that it might be advantageous for us to basically upgrade the, the health suite so that it's outside of, I don't know if you've been there recently, but a very, very cramped quarters into someplace that would be certainly more advantageous, and yet still very, very close to the cafeteria that Nurse Melissa plays a very, very big part of in terms of the daily life of what goes on in the cafeteria. Just also want to let you know that the Department of Transportation was looking at the speed limits and the duration, the times, the day that they were taking into effect. I was asked to provide an update with regard to that, but we have not heard back from the Department of Transportation as of yet to provide you with that update, so please stay tuned. Lastly, as a just sort of a good fun news I wanted to share with you, that part of the Malcolm Gordon Grant was the creation of orienteering maps. We're very, very fortunate that there are not a lot of cartographers in this country, and there happens to be a very, very well-known cartographer that lives in Northern Westchester. He has been working on our school forest and also our local grounds to, to provide data, and you could sort of take one and pass it around so you can get an idea. It's obviously, this is still in the rough draft, but really sort of far along to see the kind of educational tool that we're going to have to further utilize our, our school forest. This is really something I think is going to be a great tool for teachers, a great tool for students in terms of not only learning how to read maps and do some place-based education through those maps, but also really more fully utilize it. Once it's done, it will have a legend and titles and all sorts that gives you an idea of, of the work they're doing.
Do orienteering exercises, like?
There'll be, those are orienteering level, they're all be simplified trail maps. I'm going to be going, actually out in the field tomorrow with one of the cartographers to, to reclaim some of the trails that have been lost since the last trail map was made back in 2005. We lost a cougar trail, a purple trail, that basically joined the canyon trail of Blueberry Swamp. We want to reclaim that trail so that we can have greater access to, to Blueberry Swamp. We also want to, you know, we found existing trails that exist near Diana's house, the Beckwood Trail, and we want to see if there's a way that we could connect those together to actually make a viable and safe trail that goes up that steep precipice there.
Every time you try it with the kids, it's so steep.
Yeah, well, I don't think we've been looking at the right spot. So, so we, you could see there are some remnants of trails near your house, and, and I might see if you have any historical information, because we're going to be going out and trying to actually blaze a new trail there.
Sure, oh, yeah.
Great.
John, thank you. Any other questions for John?
I don't know if, like, discuss this before I got here, but I understand that there are going to be twenty-five kids in the first grade. We're twenty-four at home, and that there's been some concern, part of some parents that it's too many. Can you speak to that and explain if there's any?
Yeah, it, it, it's a large for primary class. Right now, it's the same as it was in kindergarten, usually sort of the rationale is you want to have smaller classes as they get older, but certainly right now, there is, you probably heard the number of twenty-five because there is one new person coming in, but there's also somebody in that class that will be leaving us to go to Manitou. So right now, it is actually the same number as it was when they're in kindergarten. One of the ways that we alleviated the numbers in kindergarten was to make sure that an aide was assigned to be working with the teacher. That's going to continue in first grade so that there will be an aide. We also have the first grade classroom right next door to Julie Green, who's going to be our interventionist. She's also going to be offering some push-in support into that first grade to also alleviate the numbers. So we're really taking a multi-pronged approach, even though we won't be able to create two separate sections next year, to really look at how we can utilize all of our personnel and free time to alleviate the numbers so it's not twenty-four students always with the one teacher and figuring out different permutations.
Thank you, John. Other questions for John?
Thank, thank you, John. We have the treasurer's report. Now, some of us are able to access that treasurer's report and some are not, but it was in your package. It's also, there are hard copies available for anybody who wants to see it now. But I would ask Sue just to summarize the highlights for us.
Uh, yeah. And I can't access that, and I realize, I, I.
Would you like, come on, you're too young.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Um, I don't know why, I, I still can't get on. Um, yeah, we, starting out, May, we.
So you want to.
It's fine. I got my guy to hear, thanks. Um, the, we started out the month with six hundred fifty-seven thousand, seven forty-four. We had expenses during, revenues during the month mainly from a transfer of one million forty-six, and we had expenses of about eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, and wire transfers of four, three forty, so we ended up the month in the multi-fund of five fourteen, five hundred fifty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents in the multi-fund. And in the investment accounts, we started out the month with seven million three hundred thirty-two thousand six twenty-three sixty-two. We did the wired transfer over to the multi-fund of one million forty-six and had a small interest of four hundred seventy-nine dollars and sixty-four cents, so we ended up the month with six million two hundred eighty-three thousand three fifty-three twenty-six.
Questions for Sue? Before we get, we're going to go right into next item, is there, we have a budget transfer of ninety-one thousand eight seventy-nine, just.
Um.
I know I'm skipping ahead, but that's okay. I'll, I'll ask the question.
Okay, all right. There is a, a budget transfer. This is for June, we're still in the two thousand sixteen, seventeen year. This is mainly due to the bus purchase, which we did earlier.
All right.
Borrowed from the wrong line, basically, so now we, now we have to replenish lines to pay our bills. But that was mainly it, and then just closing out the year, there's a lot of different salary adjustments and stuff, so these are all little minor adjustments, and there's a sick day by now as well.
So then, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so there's a, a budget transfer for ninety-one eight seventy-nine.
I wanted to ask the question because we'll approve the treasurer's report and the budget transfer right now unless there are other questions for Sue. If not, there are two motions. The resolved Board of Education Garrison Unit Free School District accepts the treasurer's report from May two thousand seventeen as presented.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Extensions, no names, and the next is that will approve that budget transfer we just talked about, which is resolved Board of Education Garrison Unit Free School District approves budget transfer number nine in the amount of ninety-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, get ready. This is the consent agenda for the regular meeting. Items C, let's see, I don't know, B through, oh, I think we've run out of alphabet here. No, we didn't, T. All right, we have a few letters left. Okay. Item B, resolved Board of Education Garrison Unit Free School District approves the consent agenda items fourteen, that B through T have presented one, except the minutes of the June seventh, two thousand seventeen board meeting. Item two, approved CSE recommendations, those are in your package, so too are the minutes of the last board meeting. Item D, accept with regret, a resignation for the purposes of retirement of Faith Knight, special education teacher, effective at the close of business June thirty, two thousand seventeen. Stress with regret, that's a, it was terrific. Item E, approve the appointment of Jennifer Muller to the part-time, that's point four, position of CSE, CPSA, that's Community Special Education, I'm not sure what the other is, chairperson for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, and annual stipend, annual salary of thirty-one thousand dollars. John, what's CPSA parent?
Oh, preschool.
Preschool, all right. Item F, approve the appointment of Mike, Mike Williams to the position of dignity act coordinator for the two seven, two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. Item G, approve the appointments of Judy Dunston and Loretta Padilla as substitute teacher, substitute nurse, substitute teacher agent, substitute school bus monitor at the rate of eighty-five dollars per day, effective July twelve, two thousand seventeen through June thirty, two thousand eighteen. Item H, approve the appointment of the board president. How funny. Approve the appointment of the board president to serve as annual meeting chairperson for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. The annual meeting is election day, it's, approved the appointment, item I, approve the appointment of Sue Tudor, Karen Lindros, Donna Anderson, and Gail Alucio, two service members of the Board of Registration for the period July one, two thousand seventeen through June thirty, two thousand eighteen. Those are our election officials. Item J, approve Melissa Harris to provide transitional work as secretary to the principal for a maximum of five days at the rate of one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents per day. Melissa's going to, I think, staying around for a few days while Catherine got back, so they have efficient and effective handoff of responsibility, so that's what that is all about. Item K, approve the two thousand seventeen, eighteen contract for services with Pundin, Northern Westchester Bosse's. That contract is in your package and has not materially changed from last year. Approve, item L, approve the contract for Edgitech Limited for onsite information technology services for the period July one, two thousand seventeen through June thirty, two thousand eighteen, at a cost of twenty-nine thousand, less you, less you seven hundred and fifty dollars. That contract is also in your package and is also not materially changed from last year, right?
No.
No, same, same, it's okay. Item M, approve the, approve the agreement with Carolyn Maciones, occupational therapist, PLLC, provide occupational therapy services at one hundred and ten dollars per hour or fifty-five dollars per half hour for the period of July thirty, two thousand seventeen through June thirty, two thousand eighteen. Item M, approve the contract for health and welfare services to the unit, with unified preschool, the Union Free School District of Attarri Towns for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year for two students at a cost of one thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty-six cents. Those are two kids in the academy, I think. Yeah, that's, that's happening. Item O, approve the appointment of Pat Beckley in the position of athletic worker for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, an annual stipend of four thousand one hundred and five dollars. Item P, soccer coaches, approve the appointment of Pat Beckley as a boys' soccer coach and Kevin Keegan as a girls' soccer coach for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, and annual stipend of three thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars each. Item Q, the data coordinator, approve the appointment of Nancy Romano for the position of data coordinator for the seventeen, eighteen school year, and annual stipend of four thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Item R, the appointment caller, approve the appointment of Leslie Denofrio to the position of substitute caller for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, and annual stipend of four thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And item S, yearbook court, yearbook advisors, co-advisors, approve the appointment of Jessica Van Decker and Melissa Harris as yearbook co-advisors for the two thousand thirteen, eighteen school year, and annual stipend of one thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars each. They both did the yearbook this year, and if anyone's seen it, know it's a really outstanding job, and the amounts don't change on any of these stipends. And lastly, appointment of the records management clerk, approve the appointment of Renee Ford in the position of records management clerk, at an hourly rate of fifteen dollars and fifty-eight cents, not to exceed a hundred and fifty dollars for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year.
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? I think it's all, as I said, I tried to sort of describe what each of those was as we went through them, they're all materially the same as last year. So all those in favor? Aye. Extensions, no names. We have, it's the only way to do this.
I do have a comment.
Oh, five minutes.
I wanted to echo your comments about Faith Knight.
Oh, yes.
We were incredibly fortunate to have Faith teach here for thirty years, and she really made a difference in the lives of many of our students, so I'm really grateful.
Yeah, it is a, it's a big shoes to fill, it's a.
I have one question.
Yeah.
Probably for you, John, but just not related to who is the substitute caller, but what is the process when we need a substitute to decide who should be the substitute? I assume there's available folks.
Well, there's an.
Some have been good substitutes in the past or whatever.
Sure, so there's an approved list, that they have to be, you know, interviewed by me and, you know, approved by, or, and multiplied by you. So once they are on the list, you know, they're, first of all, they can't get on the list unless they meet minimum qualifications for a teacher to be certified, to be fingerprinted with state. And then basically, when there are requests for a teacher for specific substitutes, we try, based upon availability, to meet those requests. And, but a lot of times, especially, you know, when they're busy days, it's all hands on decks, and what we bring is, we bring, we bring them in. You know, a lot, sometimes there is a month notification because it's a conference and we're able to do a lot of planning ahead, and a lot of time, five people are calling at five in the morning because, you know, the flu, cold flu season, so.
And the caller, but the caller is what, are you approved list of people working their way down, or up, or whatever?
Leslie Denofrio was the caller, basically, who has all of the phone numbers and is texting or calling them as, as needed and making the plans and scheduling them.
Okay, thanks.
We're lucky to have some good reliable people that are talented and can keep the instruction going on those days, so.
The teachers will, if they know they're going to be, occasionally, some teachers, if they know they're going to be out, will request a particular sub based on experience. They know this person knows my kids, knows my curriculum, so as long as we've got that flexibility and it's honored, that's, that's important.
Absolutely.
So just, so do we pay the, do we pay for the fingerprinting? Uh, no. Uh, no. So the three person employees are paying or not?
No, we don't, we don't reimburse them that in all but like.
One discussion item, a couple of action items. Discussion item is the minutes of the facilities committee meeting held, whatever that was.
June seventh.
June seventh. Those are in your package. Anybody who's there would like to, if there are any questions about it, ask the board member who was there, or if the board member who was there would like to, members who they would like to summarize the discussion briefly, that would be fine, too.
I think it summarized, I think, it summarized.
Do we have the architects in there again?
Yeah.
Yeah. Your Joel was there also?
Proceed.
And your Joe was there? There was three of us there.
We've asked the, with benefit of anyone else who's interested, I think we've asked the architects to come at a meeting in the fall to make a presentation to the full board on the kinds of recommendations they, the day of review. Okay, that's been, we have two, three actions, three action items. One, this is the important one, well, they're all important, I should say. Uh, the board calendar, if I had sent a note ahead of this meeting, I would have said, review the, the board cal, propose the board calendar. In addition, everything, give particular attention to it. Um, the calendar's in your package. Our job is simply resolve board of education Garrison Union Free School District hereby approves the two thousand seventeen-eighteen board of education meetings calendar as presented. It's in your package and as I understand it, we added one meeting, which is good. Hold this, so move. We added one meeting at the end of April, beginning of May. In recognition of the fact that last year we were, we had, yeah, two five, two fifteen and thirty fifteen is the election. So we have a post-election meeting we've added on the thirtieth, which I think is a good idea, of May two thousand eighteen. We have calendars now. I have it so moved. Are there any questions about the calendar?
I have a question about the August meeting. There's email going around, it sounds like a number of people can't make it.
This, on the August thirtieth?
The other coming one, August thirtieth, and there's a very good chance I won't be able to make it, too, is what happens one enough.
There's one of them that we have a certain timeframe. Is it this one?
No, this one, yeah, this one had to be done by July fifteenth, that's the, that's the plan.
Yours one, we have a timeframe, too, to send the tax rate.
But it has to be by August thirtieth?
It has to be, yeah, it actually needs to be done before then because the tax bills go out before then. But normally, it's, it's done and then it's sort of done after the fact, but it's-
Yeah, that's, yeah, we'll do, we have, if we have a forum, we'll have a meeting. If we're not gonna have a forum, then it looks like we're not gonna have a forum. Let's get that back to Laura. She's back on the seventeenth. And then let's look at some alternative dates in which we can get a forum together to have that meeting in which we will do more other things. Approve the tax rate.
Can somebody maybe get that email out before the seventeenth? Oh, no, we're already at the-
Beth is not here.
Twelve. I'll, I'll email Laura tomorrow.
Email Laura, that's-
Just to get it started, because it usually takes a while for us all.
Okay, yeah, so let's, we'll, we'll do the best we can to get as many people here as we can. We know August is always difficult, so vacations and everything. So anyway, so where were we?
I was on my main motion.
Main motion, all those in favor? Aye. Extentions non nes. Additional reduction in position. Resolve the board of education Garrison Union Free School District hereby reduces the following position effective June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen and directs the superintendent to notify the person or persons affected. Uh, reduce the English seven dash twelve teacher position within the academic tenure area of English from one point zero to point six one FTE. That's full-time equivalent.
So moved.
Give me a second and I'll ask John to elaborate on that. There's a little bit of tick. I guess, I get, well, let me, let me ask a question. In making this reduction, we will, our seventh and eighth grade English ELA students will still receive the same level of instruction that they always have. So while the position may be limited and not, may be reduced, the number of hours afforded to seventh and eighth grade ELA students does not change.
The level of instruction, the frequency of instruction is consistent, does not change one bit.
It's a forty-minute period every single day that they have for ELA instruction.
All right. We discussed this one in the past, but I just wanted to, varies repeating at every opportunity. Not a reduction in instruction. All those in favor? Aye. Extentions non nes, good. And last, recertify OAPDR lead evaluators. Okay, resolve the board of education Garrison Union Free School District pursuant to the provisions of education law section three twelve, three oh one two dash B and part thirty dash three dot one zero. For the regions rules hereby certify that the following individuals have completed all the necessary training to be certified as lead evaluators of the last year's patrons, Laura Mitchell and John Griffiths, and be it further resolved to the board of education pursuant to the provisions of education law three oh one two dash D and part three oh dash three point one zero. For the regions of the regions rules hereby certifies that the following individuals have completed all the necessary training to be certified as lead evaluators of building principals. That's Laura Mitchell and Sue Hutter.
So moved.
I'll take a second and then we can answer questions. Second, questions or comments? This is, Laura and John evaluate teachers and we've approved, we certify that they have the credentials to do that. Laura evaluates principals, we certify that she has, she and Sue have the credentials to do that. That's, and we do, we have to do this every year. Comments, questions? If not, all those in favor? Aye. No extensions, no names. Well done, everybody. That concludes, well, it does not conclude, but it concludes the administrative portion of the work we had to do tonight. Our next item of business is public comment and we're always glad to see members of the public with us.
We hope to see public.
Even on, I think, solitary nights like this, we're kind of, but any members of the public have a comment? Questions? This is the time to share.
Oh, Sam has lots of comments.
Sam Lynn. Future students are always welcome. Yes, I'm sorry about that.
One comment in relation to your earlier discussion about the incoming first grade that will not be split. I had a student in kindergarten this year who'll be going into first grade and it was really an incredible class. It worked really well, I thought, because, I don't know what you've heard from other parents, but having had the experience with a son of a very small class, the larger class allowed for more social configurations, is very evenly split, boys and girls, and you had one of the best teachers in that classroom, is Brittany Slinski. So as you're looking going forward, please also, I know I've mentioned this to your principal and the superintendent, that I would love to see Miss Slinski back in the school if at all possible. She's fantastic. And as you're looking to keep that class large, which I think is fantastic for first grade, I would also hope that you make sure you have a great teacher in place to manage it. It's a lot of different personalities, which is great, but it was really well managed last year and it was a fantastic year. So just, I mean, I don't know who you heard from otherwise, but it was great.
Is there an opportunity to kind of go over that we do have that magic number before we split the classes? I think you kind of touched on it before.
A magic number?
Yeah, it's like twenty-five, once we go over twenty-five is when we start considering.
Yeah, I'd say around twenty-five, twenty-six, I'm sure you're, splitting sections. I don't think it's a hard fast number. I think it is contingent upon a lot of circumstances that revolve around age and cohort and specific personalities. But I'd say most elementary educators would say by the time, you know, be around twenty-five, twenty-six, we're looking at splitting. Unless you're in the city and then, of course, you have class sizes of thirty, that's different.
I just thought it'd be a good time to kind of throw that in.
Oh, yes.
I guess I do have one comment. Um, the, so just talking about, we were talking about the fifth grade next year. And I know it's sort of a small sample size and we have a, we have a good solution. But part of the reason I wanted to come to this board meeting and just sort of show up at more board meetings is just sort of get a feel about how we want to address that, how we want our school to be going forward. And I know our school has a lot of really great strengths and one of the things, the challenges that we have to do is just random class sizes. You never know if a class is gonna have nine kids in it or forty kids in it. And that's just sort of the nature of our school. And so, so it seems to me, so this was last year, the last year's in-going fifth grade class, question came up, is fifth grade going to be in middle school? As I understand it, though, I don't have a, you know, a statistically significant sample size, there were some parents who were upset about the fifth graders going into middle school and some of them chose to take their students out of our school and go elsewhere. Ultimately, that fifth grade didn't go. Same question came up again this year. Again, had lots of parent discussion about it. The, ultimately, it's been decided that the fifth grade isn't going to be in middle school. But one of my comments is, this is sort of a, it's a hot button for, on a lot of levels, it's a hot button in both directions for parents. There are some parents who believe absolutely those fifth graders need to be up in middle school. There are some parents who believe the other way. My concern is this coming up every single year and it impacting our ability to retain students and families going forward. And I don't know, and I don't know, this is, this is the thing, I'm not, I don't know one hundred percent which way it should go. And I know, like I said, we have staffing issues. Some years the fifth grade is nine kids and some years the fifth grade is huge. It just depends. But I can't help wondering if we can't come to a decision about what does our middle school look like? Because if we decide, you know what, fifth through eighth grade is gonna be our middle school, there are a lot of things from a guidance standpoint, from a teacher's standpoint, from all those things that we can do to start to prepare the kids as they're entering. We have just from, I mean, this is, you know, just basic, just bridging ceremony that happens at the end of the fifth grade year. You're going into sixth grade and these kids have a big party where they go and they meet with other middle schoolers that they're gonna hang out with this next year. If every year it comes up for debate, is the fifth grade going, is it not? Nobody's gonna hold that party because we don't quite know, you know, if that's gonna happen or not. And so there's an opportunity there that sort of gets missed out on. And so, like I said, I don't have a, I'm not coming here saying we need to decide that, you know, the fifth grade will never be in middle school, but I'm concerned that it impacts, like I said, I think in years past, there have been not, I mean, any, any numbers are significant when it comes to a small class. If there's four kids who leave, a class of fifteen, those are significant numbers. So I'm concerned about retention where our middle school is fifth grade.
Before I ask John, who I think is the most appropriate person here to respond, I should know, I would like, one of my basic duties when we introduce public comment was to remind whoever's gonna share a comment that they should introduce themselves.
Sorry, Sarah.
I had the last emotional comment, so if I could ask, just for those people who may be watching, hundreds of thousands.
Exactly.
I'm Sarah Torrey.
Thank you, Sarah.
I'm Melinda Higbee.
Thank you, but that's, no, John, I do, as I said, so that's called, the last thing we wanna do is, is if parents do any stress in terms of, you know, surprising them as in terms of where kids are going to be. In terms of what's the appropriate age for middle school, you're right, there isn't a hard fast answer for it. You'll have a lot of, a lot of different, people doing different things in different parts of the country. There is compelling research that, that justifies fifth grade as being part of the middle school. When you're looking at developmentally, developmental stages, fifth and sixth graders share a lot of similarities and then seventh and eighth graders share a lot of similarities. So when people are looking at that research, they are thinking that you have fifth graders with sixth graders do make a lot of sense. However, sort of backtrack a little bit, I, I think, you know, one of the things that interests me is to, is to look at how we can move into the future and really, really build the foundations of making this a K-eight school. So as, as, as I think of myself as a principal here in the Garrison Union Free School District, I don't think of myself as a principal of two, two different schools. So I don't think of myself as an elementary school principal and a middle school principal. I think of myself as a, as a K-eight principal. So what I'm interested in doing is, as I'm working with the board, as I'm working with the faculty, as I'm working with parents, as I'm working with architects to prepare for a calendar plan, to see what we can do to really think of what are the benefits of our school being a K through eight school? Because certainly, there's also a lot of research as to how beneficial it is for students to really grow and learn within a K-eight building and to think about how we really, really bring those, those advantages to the top and celebrate them and make them the pillars of our program. And I think that as we do that, hopefully, there's sort of a less of an onus on where any one particular classroom is in the building because it's starting to feel like more like a K-eight school. So that's why it's safe for now, is, is the best answer. Thank you, Jo, thank you, Melinda. Board member comment?
I have a question about this. So did we lose students rising to the fifth grade?
Last year. There was a big component that went to manatee, yeah. And it was a small class to begin with.
So that the, the current, the fifth grade that just finished.
The in-going sixth grade, yes, that going into sixth grade next year. And at least the parents that I've talked to have said, the only kids who are left are those whose parents could not afford to send them, that if they could, I've heard that from a couple of different parents, if they could have afforded to send them to a different school situation, either holding or manatee, they would have.
Susan, I just don't understand the, what aspect of that is, the class and its own dynamics and challenges versus whether that class is in, to be honest, I wasn't aware, my kid is one of those fifth graders, not staying in that fifth grade, in the class, but I wasn't aware that middle, being part of the middle school or being part of the lower school was an issue versus the dynamic of the class, who's gonna be the teacher and, you know, a bunch of other things around the kids. So is there, can you just help educate us, or at least me, as to what, what the material impact is if it's lower school or middle school? Cause I actually didn't realize that.
This is the first, this is the first I've heard of that as being a possible reason why they left.
Regardless of whether people left, I just mean, why would it matter one way or the other? You know, the statement that you're in middle school, what, what dynamics change?
So a fresh old question. Were, were we at some point, you Laura and others, at some point, early, of the course of this year, considering, consolidating, moving the fifth grade into the middle school as a means to take advantage of an opportunity to address a problem or whatever?
Yeah, so it came from a personnel necessity, basically, in, basically without reducing our, without adding to our staff and wanting to take one of our staff members and allocate them to be an interventionist. It was taking some creative workings of personnel. So one of the things, we had Leslie Denofrio as a sixth grade English teacher this year and she was very, very interested in maintaining that position. Yet we were in need of an elementary school teacher to also teach fifth grade. So one of the working ways that we were going to basically keep her expertise that she was developing in sixth grade and have her do fifth grade was to have basically fifth grade be job shared between her and basically some secondary teachers. So that what we were having was a number of teachers teaching fifth grade. And the thing, the question was, where was the best place to put them? If they were teachers, they were also assigned to the middle school, there were a few different things that we were looking at. Would we just put a fifth grade homeroom in the middle school so that the, basically, teachers could easily, basically have the students, you know, go in and out of their classrooms? Were we going to have the fifth grade be perhaps at the bottom of the stairs at a community location so that those teachers could travel and still in the elementary wing? There was never a final decision on this because basically Leslie Denofrio decided to forego teaching sixth grade and just become a fifth grade teacher, so a self-contained fifth grade teacher. So before we made a final decision on the placement of the fifth grade team, the decision, the need to go any further became moot when she made a decision to just become a fifth grade teacher.
Who will be teaching sixth grade next year?
Sixth grade will be taught, it will be basically taught by the middle school team.
Who's the, who will be the ELA writing teacher?
The ELA writing teacher will be, it will be a combined humanities study with Chris Caliendo, June humanities across social studies and English language arts.
Well, it sounds like, I mean, the concern is, it's a valid concern. It sounds like all of this discussion about moving, moving fifth grade into the middle school is a strategic, it sounds like what was driving the discussions this year was much more tactical and circumstantial. And so I understand the need to deal with that situation by moving, making that change is really one, I think, as you said, and it's Melinda, a little too early, one that has to be part of a bigger, part of a bigger strategy, thought of on that level. But I understand what you were trying to do and what you had to do is much more circumstantial. So as it stands right now, we're, the fifth grade classes staying where it was by virtue of the fact that one teacher's going into the middle school. These are all very, very tactical. These are all very, very tactical decisions, teachers deciding what they want. Here or there, anything else is not the basis on which I think you decide to move a class up or down in or out of the middle school. David, were you about to?
Yeah, two, two things. Um, the, the, the K eight, the enrollment figure for the school. My understanding is that, and I may be wrong with this, is that they declined for the last two years to approve. Is that true from year to year?
Are enrollment here?
Oh, yeah, okay, Amy.
Yeah, we had a demographer come in this past year and say that the forecast, we were, we were at, last year at two hundred and ten. And the forecast was for us in the next four to five years to go into one nineties and maintain that for a, a long period of time. So the demographer from Boise said that we will probably dip into the mid one nineties and that's where we'll be probably for about a decade.
Is there any, is there any threshold number below which we start getting worried about, about the viability of the school?
David, I don't have that.
Well. Let's stay with the thought, I just answer a second. What, what threshold would, as long as the district, who is the board, district has the support of the, the community and there's no, there's no other reason for consolidating that anywhere, then the absolute number of enrollees doesn't really, doesn't really matter. If anything, if anything, we prize ourselves in having small class sizes, right? So the smaller the total enrollment, the smaller the class sizes allows you a little more flexibility with respect to deploying faculty. Could be argued is a good thing. So I, you know, I don't know. I, I, the only, the only thing that's worth noting, I think I'm recalling the demographer's presentation accurately, is that while we have experienced this decline and are projecting a further decline into the mid one nineties, it is as a, as a percentage basis of change, more or less consistent with what other districts in the area are also experiencing. So it's not that we're, we're not anonymous.
I mean, I think that it is, it's worth making the point that that's not a reflection of, of, of school failure in some way. Because I think that, that there are people in the community that may see that as, as a problem. And we should just be upfront about it and communicate our, our understanding of what, of what that means.
Yeah, I think that is absolutely right. I have, I have said before, I'll make this my little comment, okay? I've said this on numerous occasions over the months, over the years. Garrison School continues to have, it's, Garrison School tax rate is slightly below the one half, the median of all the other schools in the public north and west of the schools. We pay about half the school taxes, most people do, for similarly valued properties. That's the reason we don't have a high school, but that's where our taxes are. Our family income is about eighty-five percent above what the median family income is in the same, for the same school district. So we have high wealth families and relatively about the lowest or some of the lowest tax rates in the area. That, the delta between those two figures or those two discrepancies allows for a lot of choices that most parents in most districts don't have, particularly with respect to private school enrollment. And we have a lot of good private school enrollment alternatives easily accessible to us. So that in part explains the attractiveness of private schools to Garrison. And it, I guess what I've always said is you don't need to explain, you don't need to explain the attractiveness of private schools in Garrison parents by making invidious comparisons with this what we provide here at the district to what those private school. And that's my board member comment. But I've said it before.
And one more thing, I mean, and this may be out of order in the sense of being, the request may be too late, but is it possible to have a brief executive session to clarify personnel matters?
Yeah, I suppose, but let's, sure.
Should we, should we have the superintendent?
Well, if, let me, let me say this, David. If you're looking to clarification on a, on a matter that is, that the superintendent should, is best addressed by the superintendent? Well, let's go, let's, sure, it's a short answer. And if you can't answer, answer the question to your satisfaction, we'll pick it up.
My only comment too, I've got a comment for what Melinda said is, um, uh, I guess, as being an active parent in the school and witnessing a lot, you know, the number of these different classroom sizes and changes, I guess I would just strongly caution the school towards making a stronger effort towards communication, which I think would help a lot, especially in the classes that wildly change of numbers, size, students leaving, rumors. We know it's a small town. And while a lot of these decisions are made by technicalities, by a teacher stepping up and saying, I'm going to do this, that message doesn't get passed down to parents. But the fact is that the parents are talking. There's, there are emails being sent around and everyone's, you know, has an opinion of what to say. And I would imagine that while we can't always predict these situations, communication ahead of time and perhaps informing parents would probably help a lot. That'd be my guess.
Yeah, at least in our situation, this, it was the last month of school that this, what is the fifth grade going to do has sort of happened, would have been super helpful for us if we had known. Because I imagine, I mean, school numbers classroom-wise aren't changing from beginning of year to end of year significantly. Staff isn't changing significantly, though, you know, there are always surprises, like Faith Knight, whom I love, do retiring. But it, it seems to me that that can be communicated to parents earlier so that there isn't this rush at the end of the school year, or, you know, when can we have a meeting? What is going to happen? That type of a thing. That it is more systematic, that we have an overall plan for this K through eight school and this is what we're going to do and, you know, and communicate. I mean, because if you started with the, the parents of the lower grade, fifth graders going to middle school and they know that and they plan for it and they prep their kids for it and this, and the teachers know and the students know and that everybody knows, I think that that's, yeah.
I think sometimes it's a little, it's a little tricky, like the situation you were talking about with the one teacher saying she wanted to go up and then she decided to come down. You can't go out and tell the parents, well, this teacher might go up, but we don't know yet. You've got to kind of wait until the whole thing works itself out before you notify.
So, you know, there's no perfect communication. I always strive to be better at communication. I'm always very, very happy to hear from the board and from the community the ways that they think will be best for me to communicate so that it gets better and better. So those that, these types of, this type of feedback is always very, very welcomed along with really ideas about what communication works best for you. In the case of the personnel move, as soon as we basically decide on a move, a letter was sent out by email to the grade level with, with the plans, with the detail of the plans. As soon as they were formulated, once again, the formulation of these plans did come from the desire to provide an interventionist for the school. RTI, response to intervention, was something that became a law about seven years ago in New York State. Part of the law for response to intervention was that we provide level through two and three services for children who are in need of skills remediation. By law, tier two and tier three, those are not, this is not special education services. They're general education services. And there's supposed to be a pull-out program that is supplements things that happen in the classroom. And this is something that did not exist in the Garrison School and it was to the disservice of, of students. So what happened, trying to do some creative changes for the fifth grade, was to free up a teacher without expending any more personnel dollars in order to create this direly needed service for all of the students of the school.
Any other board member comment?
I have a question for John. John, the pairing of Ms. Kirkpatrick and Mrs. Waters was really exceptional in this past academic year. So are they not going to teach together?
They are. They are the two fourth grade teachers and they will continue for the fourth grade to, to basically departmentalize with humanities and math and sciences that happen.
Okay, so they're willing to fourth, they won't be fifth?
That's true.
They'll be two fourths. Oh. Thank you.
No, I have that, sorry.
Um, I, I attended two Haldane board meetings and just a couple of other things. I also want to congratulate Derek on his graduate. Yeah, that is, that is nice. It was a great graduation.
She will be missed.
Yeah. Haldane, the new president is Laura Hammond. The vice president is Peggy Clemens. Paul Piazza, which you might have read is, was the CRO at, at Haldane. He's now left because he's now an investigator. And the new one is Charlie Johnson, which I haven't read yet. James Ponland has been sold. And their board meetings are the first of third Tuesdays, if anyone wants to.
The only other thing I would say is, I thank you again for your commitment. Welcome back. Welcome back. And if there are no other comments, I mean. Resolve the Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District adjourns.
Are you, are you going to adjourn?
Why, do I need to add that to the agenda? All right. Let's, sorry.
Don't we have to close this one and then?
No, no, you have to.
It's going to be adjourned and then you back and then adjourned.
So, here's what we're going to do. We're going to resolve the Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District, amend its agenda to include an executive session on that is July twelfth meeting. I need so move.
So moved.
And second, all those in favor say aye? Aye. All right, then we're going to adjourn, or it's regular meeting.
Do we have to? John doesn't usually come to our executive sessions.
It is highly at our discretion. So we invite an executive session. That does not require a resolution.
Seconded, who seconded this, the, the motion?
I did.
Or you? Just pick one.
No, 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 that's all right. I said, no, we, it doesn't matter. So now we're going to adjourn the executive session to discuss personnel matters.
So moved.
All those in favor, aye? No extensions are made. Thank you very much for coming guys.
What happened? He's got a baby anymore.
Bye.
Come on.
Bye, bye, everyone. Bye, bye.
You're lucky you just to be.
Now, how are your two? I see your two in there.